All right, I call to order the January 16th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Let's start with a roll call.
Acting Chair Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Here.
Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Commissioner Lark?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I will now read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Chehopes people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Minutes from the December 5th, 2023 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
I will second that.
All right, is there any discussion? No. Let's go on to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Epstein.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Acting Chair Atkins?
Yes. All right, now Agenda Item, Agenda Item Three, Reports and Comments. So let's start with reports of commissioners. Is there anything any of you would like to share?
Nothing significant to report at this time.
No, thank you.
I guess the only thing that I have to report is I did wind up in a new position in another place. I recently got elected to the Everett School Board in November, and so that's a very exciting new adventure for me. Let's move on to staff comments.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm York Stevens, Watched, a Planning Director, and I think for the last time of 2024, I'll say Happy New Year. Happy New Year to all of you. I hope you had good holidays and good time off and some relaxing, relaxing time. And back to work we are at the city, and probably the same for you there. Couple of updates today. Park District. When we left you in late 2023, we were expecting to have the Park District on today's agenda. A little bit of a delay for work on the development agreement with that. It's a big, complicated project. The comprehensive plan update, the planning, plan, development overlay, and the street realignment, parts of that are all on track. The development agreement is not part of what is required of the Planning Commission recommendation, but I think it's a really important piece of context, and it touches on some of the questions that you've had over the life of the project. Did not want to split it up into different pieces and did not want it to move forward with the PDO and the Comp Plan Amendment without the context from the development agreement. So a bunch of meetings on that going on this week. I had to pause that for the holidays as well, so we are anticipating or hoping, I'll know more tomorrow, but we think February 6th may still be in play to continue that discussion. Need a little bit more time early this year. That would still allow for the EHA team's goal of getting this to the council on March 6th, I think it is. February 6th is the last Planning Commission date that would allow all the subsequent steps to occur in time for the council to be able to make a final decision on all that on March 6th. Again, I'll learn more with some meetings tomorrow.
York?
Yes.
On this topic, the environmental impact statement, I know that was the draft previously that we saw, what is the timeline on that, or where is that, has comment period ended and is that?
Yes, yes, comment period has ended. A final environmental impact statement, so the, what the final environmental impact statement does is respond to all of the comments as well as update any information that needs updating, usually in response to those comments, but it could be in response to kind of staff review. That final environmental impact statement has been drafted and just waiting for those same conversations to put the stamp on it and issue it. It's a good point, that's also a prerequisite to the staff recommendation, Planning Commission's recommendation, and all the rest of those steps.
But that will be ready, we'll be able to have that before that next meeting we're talking about.
Yes, yes, exactly. So that, that is almost tied up and all waiting for a couple of conversations to be able to move forward with all of the information in hand. Still have a great list of questions that you all had at the last meeting and some information that EHA was going to present viability of the non-residential program and things like that. So putting that on pause, hopefully February 6th, maybe February 20th. We will have a council public hearing on the street vacation aspect on February 7th. Might make that a public hearing on the whole thing, may keep it, it's already been scheduled, so we have to keep that February 7th date. We'll see what all is encompassed in that, in that public hearing. Folks can stay tuned to the website for updates, so we do update it. For instance, change to the January 16th date to, I think, early February, and we'll continue to keep that up to date, and we'll let you know. In the meantime, I know a couple commissioners, we're going to potentially have some comments or questions on some of the details of the plan development overlay. Where we last left, we had lots of discussion about kind of the big picture aspects of the development, but did want to make sure that we were looking at all of the details of the development plan and the development regulation and design standard changes, and so still hoping to get any input that anyone has on those details for that next meeting.
So can I ask you, how, how would you like that input from emails or?
Yeah, an email before the meeting would give staff a chance to digest and respond to it. It can be in the meeting itself, then we have to think a little bit more on our feet, which is fine, we're used to that. If it would be a proposed amendment, would be most efficient to have that before the packet goes out, we can share that with the, with your colleagues on the Planning Commission. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, in other news, Riverfront Development Agreement and Plan Development Overlay Amendment, that was also delayed by a couple of weeks for some discussions on the ORPDA, amended and restated property disposition agreement, the danger of acronyms. That's going to the council for a public hearing in consideration tomorrow. This was the redesignation of the theater site into an anchor food and recreation. We've had a lot of good public comments on that. A lot of pickleball fans out there have shown their support for it. There are also some theater fans out there that have been dismayed by the change in plans there, and then just a bunch of other people interested in the development, excited to see it progress. It's an interesting exercise for staff because this is the maintenance of a plan development overlay and development agreement 10 years or so after it was adopted and on its Third Amendment and everything, so it's giving us a lot of good food for thought on how to structure them to be durable over time and make for the appropriate amount of flexibility. There's a lot of process to go through, for instance, to change a theater into anchor food and recreation, going all the way to the city council by ordinance with public hearings and a trip through the Planning Commission and all that. To some, that may be an important and significant change, and I think it's worth it to be as public with it as possible, but it's also a many-month-long process to do it. So something for us to think about as we structure the Park District Plan Development Overlay and Development Agreement. Still, Becky may touch on this as we talk through the 2024 schedule, looking for a historical commission joint meeting. I think we had talked about, well, we're looking at maybe February 20th for that meeting. We're holding interviews this week with Planning Commissioner candidates. I know that was a question at the last, that last one. It took, took me a little while to get around to that. Thank you to Nicole for getting those scheduled and getting that unstuck, so should have news for that on the next meeting. And then on Thursday, the city will be issuing a determination of significance and scoping notice for the Everett Outdoor Multipurpose Facility. This is the, what could be the new home of the Everett Aqua Sox. There are two site alternatives currently in play. The scoping notice is, is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the alternatives and the scope of the environmental review with that project. So look for some attention on sporting facilities and multipurpose facilities coming up soon. That's the end of my list for today, but as always, an opportunity for any questions.
Any further questions?
Just in regards to the sporting facility, what do we know as of right now, other than what I've, I mean, I've read stuff in the news, but can we get a quick little summary of what some of the facts on the ground are right now, what decisions have been, if there's any been, any decisions made?
Yeah, so it should all be in the scoping notice that you'll see hitting the streets on Thursday, but there are the two alternatives, so there was an effort to look at candidate sites throughout the city, and two of those emerged as, as candidates through the first screening. That is the existing Funko Field and kind of a remodel. The background on this is Major League Baseball is taking more control over Minor League Baseball and having some requirements for facility design that the current Funko Field does not meet, and so we would need to either remodel that stadium, find a new site, or potentially the Aqua Sox would not be playing there anymore. So this, this process has two sites, one of them at the existing Funko Field and one of them between Broadway, Pacific, Hewitt, and the railroad tracks, right across Broadway from the Angel of the Winds Arena. Those are the two sites initially proposed for study in a draft environmental impact statement, and, and then there's a task force that is standing up to look for, I believe, funding options and, and the rest of it, besides the citing and design and everything. It's at an early stage, and the scoping process, there will be a public meeting on, I can't say the wrong day, so give me a second while I pull this up, although that will be in the scoping notice too. Kathy, do you remember that date?
I don't, I can pull it up.
I should have had this already teed up as I was giving just a teaser on a very interesting project, should have known there would be questions about that. Okay, let's start over. Brief description of the proposal. It'll meet the new Major League Baseball facility standards for a high A minor league baseball stadium that provides 2,800 to 3,200 fixed seats for baseball fans and would also be intended to provide other amenities and serve other programs such as baseball for high school, college, and/or tournaments, conversion to an amphitheater type setting that could seat up to 5,000 for concerts and community events, and use as a public park with amenities suitable for anticipated growth in Everett. Footprint of approximately eight acres, inclusive and accessible, with a broad range of affordable use opportunities. The two alternatives, and then a no-action alternative, which would be do nothing, and it would result in the high likelihood that the Aqua Sox would be relocated outside of Elements for analysis, noise, light and glare, historic and cultural resources, and transportation, those are the ones proposed in the scoping notice, and that's, other than the alternatives, the elements for analysis are the key aspect for public comment in the scoping period. And then there is a, I did have the right day. February 13th at 6:00 PM will be an online public scoping meeting for folks to tune in and hear more about the project and potentially give comments. All that will be available on a website, a city website about the stadium, as well as posted to all of our normal notice channels.
I guess I want to come back, maybe you mentioned about Park District and some of the details going into the plan development overlay and the agreement. I can't, I don't recall there being any discussion previously, and I, this is something I had been thinking of. I know when they built that Housing Hope project here, just on Broadway, there was a lot of thought, and they got, I think, won some awards even for the environmental kind of aspects, the green aspects of that. And I don't, I don't, don't remember hearing anything about that so far, and I don't know if that was something to, is being considered or talked about with regard to some of the design standards or, you know, moving forward in 10 years in the future with, you know, thinking about changes in the environment, it just seemed to be that might be something to, to look at, maybe even some requirements, if not to include some of those, incorporate some of those aspects, because it does seem like that's certainly where the future lies, and this is a long-range kind of project, so I don't know if there's, has been anything so far, or?
All I remember is, I, I, I'm pretty sure I remember hearing a statement of intent by the project team to use sustainable materials. I think they were looking at hopefully CLT composite laminated timber, different building materials types, low embodied carbon, and, and affordable and flexible and everything. I don't remember that there is anything in the plan development overlay that would require any level or certification of sustainability. I think that's part of EHA's mission, if I'm not mistaken, and so that's something that they would seek to do, is to the extent that it's, fits within their scope and budget. That is something that we could ask the project team when they come back, and there are aspects other than like building technology and, you know, whether it uses gas or electric and things like that. I think just by its, its nature as a dense and mixed-use community along the transit line can have some sustainable aspects to it, too.
And I was wondering about, you know, solar panels?
Right.
Solar rays, I mean, might be some opportunity, great opportunity there, given the projected heights they're wanting to go to, I don't, you know, I was also wondering about, you know, maybe drought-resistant landscaping requirements, things like that, given, you know, climate change and water and scarcity and things like that, just, just some, just some thoughts that I, and maybe I, when we get some more, I'll maybe add some comment on that, but it was just a thought that I was having, we talked about more, some more specifics, drilling down a little bit, some opportunities there.
Yeah, I will add that to the list of questions.
Can I add tundra-resistant plants, given the weather we've recently had?
That's right. Our existing landscaping code, which the plan development overlay connects to, does focus on native and drought-tolerant planting, so it could be that at least for the landscaping piece, that's already covered.
I just have one quick question. So one of the areas being scoped for the, the multifaceted recreation center?
Yeah.
Is Broadway to the railroad, Hewitt to Pacific. If memory serves me right, didn't we also submit to sound transit probable station locations that are within the vicinity of Broadway to the railroad, Hewitt and Pacific? Okay.
Yep. When we were looking at that, this was even earlier in the stadium, the multipurpose outdoor facility design process, but there appeared to be room for both at that point. That was a question that I had. We essentially have a footprint for the, for this outdoor multipurpose facility that overlaps the footprint of the light rail Station D, as well as the lead track for Station C, I believe, both of which will be doing draft environmental impact statement processes concurrently, and I think that's, that will have to be addressed in both of the EIS's environmental impact statements, but at least in some of the initial work for both projects, there was room for both. So the ultimate extent going out to all of those streets is designed to be conservative, both with the light rail as well as with the outdoor facility. It's hard to go outside the boundaries that you've drawn, but it is certainly possible to shrink within it in different ways.
Well, going back to my childhood, I always loved a good crossover episode, so looking forward to this.
Yeah, I do enjoy the, the kind of parallel, I mean, we're talking about environmental impact statement and the comprehensive plan and light rail and the, and the outdoor facility, and there, I think we, we learned from each one of these, the Park District project, we learned from each one of these processes and see some of the parallels to development agreements, plan development overlays. It's all interrelated.
Any further questions or comments? Do we have anyone, I don't see anyone in person, do we have anyone online for public comment? Do I need to read the instructions to participants if we, okay. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 4A, Election of Officers. I guess we'll just start with Chair. I do know that Chair Chatters is interested in continuing to serve, if no one else has any hard feelings about it. Is there anyone else that would like to nominate someone or nominate themselves? All right, well.
Well, I guess I would just say, I know we are missing some members who aren't here for whatever reason, I, I guess I'm a little hesitant to maybe nominate someone or who's not here, that we don't know what their wishes are, so I feel like in some ways we're somewhat limited to the, those who are here who can, who can chime in on that. But other than that, I, I, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, do we know if we have to do these election of officers at this meeting?
After, last year I made sure to bring my bylaws with me. Article three, section one, nominations of officers shall be paid from the floor at a regular meeting date in the month, June, month of January of each calendar year, and the elections shall follow immediately thereafter. So I do believe we need to nominate and elect officers. That said, I guess if that officer was, was game for it, they could, we could revote and change officers later.
Okay.
Perhaps I could make a nomination. How about if I nominate Commissioner Atkins to move from, I guess, what's the position, is it Vice Chair, to, to the position of Chair?
I believe that would require us to change the bylaws once again.
Oh, right, because he's not, oh, right, because he's not a, okay, I understand.
Right, we did that just for the Vice Chair person last year. Am I looking that up, or are we pretty confident in it?
Well, I, I guess to make it easy, I'll just turn down the nomination, so that way we don't have to vote on bylaws today.
It's my favorite thing to do, though.
Oh, God.
These are the 2019. Kathy, where are the bylaws in S, S common?
Yeah, under, well, actually, they're under.
Kate Davis.
Kate Davis, planning permission.
I had the right idea, but not full implementation. I still just see 2019 procedures.
You?
2023, got it. March 21, 23.
Mr. Ballard, are you not interested in, would you not, would you not accept if nominated?
I'm not interested in the nomination.
You wouldn't accept if nominated?
Well, I guess I'm asking, would you not accept?
I turned down the nomination. For? For my, no, for myself. Did you formally nominate? I have not formally nominated Commissioner Chatters.
Did you say communication with?
Yes, she, she did, she did communicate that she would accept the nomination if she were to be nominated.
I make a motion to nominate Chair Chatters, to continue with Chair Chatters.
Second.
Do we do discussion on these things? Do we just?
I mean, you can't, you can't.
You can discuss for both.
Okay, it, it would, does anyone have anything they'd like to say before we move on to a vote? All right.
Four years.
Let's do a roll call vote then.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Acting Chair Atkins?
Yes.
You beat me to it.
All right, let's move on to nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate the standing Chair Charles Atkins.
All right, any discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Acting Chair Atkins.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that completes election of officers, right? We don't have any other officers, do we? Okay. Then let's move on to Agenda Item 4B, Temporary Use. I'll turn it over to York.
Okay, thank you. And I, just, just too late, but confirmed it is only the Vice Chair person that can be an alternate. Okay, temporary uses. Temporary use is a process by which a, a, a use that would not otherwise be allowed in a given zone may be authorized for a temporary period after which all evidence of the use must be cleared up. Currently, temporary uses are limited to 60 days by code, and there is a section in EMC 1905068 that has a whole list of criteria, procedures, and requirements for temporary uses. For 60-day periods, subject to a set of criterias, the city may authorize a temporary use. The, and that is limited to once per 365-day period by the same user in the same location. So no renewals and no extensions are provided in existing code. The criteria for temporary uses include the following three. The proposed temporary use will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in the immediate vicinity. Number two, the proposed temporary use is compatible in terms of location, access, traffic, noise, nuisance, dust control, and hours of operation with existing land uses in the immediate vicinity. And number three, the proposed temporary use is not otherwise allowable in the zone in which it was proposed. The city is required to designate a period following the expiration of the permit in which the, the use must be terminated and all physical evidence removed by the applicant. The process for reviewing a temporary use is a Planning Director decision following the review process one, process, which is not a public notice and not one of the higher levels of review, including the hearing examiner or city council. A situation emerged late last year, you probably heard about it, or maybe I gave updates at this, at one of my staff comments, but at Claire's place, there was contamination found in a building that led to a need to remediate the building, clean up the contamination. The residents needed a place to stay during that time. The city was able to stand up a set of temporary outdoor shelters on neighboring city-owned land at the reservoir site there. Were able to put that together in a little over a weekend, I think, from about a Thursday to a Monday. Staff were able to get out there, set up a, a site, get shelters put up and energized and ready for habitation by. Staff were able to get out there, set up a site, get shelters put up and energized and ready for habitation by early the following week. This was important in this case because it was best for the population that they, the residents of the building, that they stay close to the to the building. It is a supportive housing, and so that support was remained onsite. I think the staff moved out of the building into some onsite trailers. It's an example of a case where we needed to do something. The city-owned reservoir land was, I believe, zoned R1 and would not have allowed a temporary outdoor encampment. And even if it did, I suppose there would be a relatively long approval process for it. There are some routes that the mayor can declare an emergency and sidestep various rules. But that's a pretty dramatic step that we hope to have some other lower impact tools than that. And so the temporary use permit wound up being a good fit for that. So I issued a temporary use permit for sixty days. That was almost enough, but I think it wound up taking around ninety or a hundred days to complete the remediation, get the building back in shape, and move the residents back in. I believe that is happening around this week, that folks are moving back in, and the facility will be back up to back running as normal. And the temporary outdoor shelter site will be taken down and reverted back to its previous its previous setup. Because we could not extend the temporary use permit, I put together an emergency ordinance that we brought to the city council that would change EMC nineteen oh five oh six eight in the way that you see in Exhibit A, proposed code amendments, remove the sentence, "The city may not grant a temporary use permit to the same user for the same use more frequently than once in every three hundred and sixty-five day period." And it also clarified that temporary use permits are a review process one decision. I knew that they were a review process one decision because review one is the default if it's not listed as two, three, four, five, six. But it took a little bit of sleuthing to figure out, and I didn't feel very comfortable with that, which is why I included this clarification that it's a review process one. It used to be a review process one explicitly listed in code before rethink zoning. I think one of the goals of that process in streamlining was to reduce the long list of things and instead use this. If it's not listed elsewhere, then it is a review one. So I'm going a little bit back on that, but this seemed like an important enough one that it was worth mentioning. But that's something that 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 we could discuss.
York, when you said it used to be review one.
It used to be explicitly listed.
Explicitly listed, okay, that's what, okay. Now it's just by not specifically listed, but by default is still one. So that that hasn't really changed, it's just not explicitly called out.
Correct, yes. So I I'm quite sure that their intent was to just streamline that list of things and get it and use this kind of catch-all instead. But felt especially with 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 something like this, I wanted to be a little bit more clear about it, but that's something that we can talk about. So the emergency ordinance was an interim official control, which allows up to six months while, and it can be extended if more studies and work needs to be done. After six months, these two changes will automatically repeal themselves and go away. During that six months, per the ordinance, the the staff and the planning commission are directed to review these changes and decide whether this is appropriate to make permanent. And by make permanent, I mean allow renewals or extensions, or at least remove that restriction that no more than once per three hundred and sixty-five day period, or do something else. So that's why I'm here today. We already did this, but temporarily, and we're asking for the planning commission's recommendation to the city council on the contents of that emergency ordinance, which the council did pass, but it was obviously kind of an emergency situation. And so I would bring this back to the council within the next couple of months or as soon as we're done with our work here on it. And the council will make the final decision on what the temporary use provisions should be and how long and whether they can be renewable. Temporary uses have are not often used. I believe the one with Claire's Place was the first since I've been here. That's about three years and one and then one renewal. There was once during the pandemic where we almost used it for a mobile COVID testing site. If you remember when those were all the rage and they were standing them up in various places. There were some zones that did not allow, I think we were would have called it a clinic type use. And so we were not able to put a a a testing station there. There were others, I think Everett Mall Parking Lot had one, and that was a mixed urban zone, and that allowed it, so it was okay there. We considered using the temporary use provision for that. I think one of the biggest problems was that we did not think that the need would go away in sixty days. So you don't want to stand something up that you wouldn't be able to to continue. Wound up founding it, finding a different location or or something for the temporary or for the COVID testing station. That's the only other time that I know of it being used. I I think it's been used in the past. I did not find any in our permit tracking system and our institutional. I don't know, Kathy, if you remember others off the top of your head, but folks that I asked around, it it's not used frequently. There are not many things that are not allowed in a zone, but someone wants to do, but only for a little bit. There's a couple of exceptions in here, covering Christmas tree lots, garage sales, and amusement rides, carnivals and circuses, and parking lot sales are all exempt from the temporary use permit. They can just happen, but are limited in duration or frequency.
But that's already in the existing code.
That's in the existing code.
The only proposed changes are what you indicated.
The only proposed change, yeah, would be to clarify and confirm that it's a review process one, and then to permit renewals and extension. One thing with the review process one I wanted to talk through was that there is no public notice. That is a little bit uncomfortable, because these are uses that are prohibited in that zone. So it seems like you would want people to know if you're kind of going around the zoning code. The problem with that is that if you need to move quickly, like with Claire's Place, you don't have time for proper public notice. Proper public notice is fifteen to nineteen days lead time, depending on the specific process. And so obviously, you're not going to be able to get something done over a weekend if there's something urgent. And I'm trying to give a route that's less extreme than a declaration of emergency by the mayor or the council when something like this comes up. We have an annual report on the zoning code that we give to the council. And this year, I'm going to add a section on temporary use permits that were issued in the previous year. So there's at least some accountability after the fact for what has happened. And I would love to hear of any other ways to kind of increase the transparency and accountability around that, short of having to slow something down if we have an urgent situation. So if we have any ideas on that, otherwise the I would, by practice, let make it publicly known that there was a temporary use permit issued.
Just thinking out loud here, would there be a downside to providing for the requirement to notice the public for renewal, rather than a Rev. One process that didn't inform the public? I can see a situation where you've got a sixty-day temporary use permit, but if they wanted to run beyond sixty days, then there would be a notice provision.
I think that would be, yeah, I think that would work, because you've got, I mean, there there could be, you're on day fifty-nine, you didn't think you'd need to renew, but you need to now. But you should, in most cases, be able to to handle a public notice at that point.
I mean, teasing apart the idea, like, yeah, they they should have enough time in that sixty-day window to submit something for more public notice. But at the same time, like, part of me, again, thinking aloud, is like, well, say you have like a more complex build, like a, like, you're putting together pallet shelters, it took a few days, or maybe it's a slightly more complexity of medical equipment, maybe it's not quite as mobile as that. Do we do we see foresee any challenges of like, well, we've we've lost a lot of time here in our goals or endeavors, you know, with with this public one? Because we have to now find a new spot, move it, et cetera. Or can we mitigate that with just like saying, hey, you need to have your you need to have your re-permit request in by a certain time? So kind of reminding them they have to do that planning and that estimation.
Right. And what is generally, if there wasn't no scrum, what is the usual quickest turnaround on something like that? I mean, coming up to a sixty-day, when would someone need to start that in order to potentially have a decision by that sixtieth day?
Right. I think if public notice was maybe a couple, I mean, it would depend how long it took them to get materials together. The public notice period itself, I think, is is fifteen and nineteen days lead time. And I'm thinking through notice of a planning commission public hearing, for example, but I was going to go check what other types of public notice there are. The simplest would be to point to an existing public notice process, such as the one for a review two permit process. But if that doesn't work, we could also define this a different one here. Could also be public notice, but no restriction on issuing the permit during dependency of that public notice.
I guess I have two questions, two, one question and maybe one observation. The question is, what you you laid out here, what the process is for applying for a temporary use. Is the process for applying for an extension of that, would it be the same? They have to resubmit an application and do the same procedure, or would it be more expedited streamlined the second time for renewal?
That's what I did for Claire's Place. The city was the applicant and the issuer of the permit, different departments, although we all worked together on it. So with with Claire's Place the second time, without knowing exactly how to do it, I went conservatively and just did a new application and a new permit, as if the first one had never happened.
And and as a Rev. One decision, administrative decision, is that considered kind of an executive branch decision under the mayor? I'm just kind of wondering the idea of public accountability. I mean, who holds that's, does that ultimately fall to the mayor as the, you know, under under mayor's purview?
In, I mean, it's it's a planning director decision under the direction of the mayor. So I, there would be some cases, if it's a not a Christmas tree lot, but something like that, I'm not going to go ask the mayor about it, but.
Right, and I guess I'm not saying that in the sense the mayor would be involved in the decision necessarily. But as far as the issue of, you know, who's ultimately accountable, is there, you know, public, is there somebody accountable? It it goes up the chain to the to the mayor essentially. So I guess in some ways, I'm just saying, it's not a completely unaccountable, unelected official.
Right, oh, yes.
Kind of making the decision. There is still some baked in at some level, this accountability.
Yes, I mean, it's it's the in in code, it's the sole authority of the planning director, but everything I do is under the direction of the mayor. And I, like I said, if it's a minor one, I'm probably not going to bother her time with it if it's anything. But that would be at my own risk to do that.
Right.
Now, now, the public, it it is true that when I issued this permit, it just goes into the system and it's done, and you contact the applicant. And how does anybody, there is an appeal process, but how does anybody even know that it happened? So it it's not the most transparent process. Someone would have to either see the thing and ask questions about it, or they would have to check our permit tracking software. But what would make them think to check that? So it is a little bit, you know, it it's accountable to an elected position, and I guess if folks saw abuse of that, then there would be recourse for that over time. That's why, and I I think I would voluntarily make it known, and that's kind of the only tension that I can see right there. So we don't want to slow down the process if it's kind of an emergency-type situation. But it feels also a little bit uncomfortable to just authorize something that's not allowed by the zoning code, and nobody knows about it.
Right, but I guess the point I want to make is it's not, even though I know it is a streamlined kind of executive decision, it's not completely shielded from, you know, and I know it doesn't have the full transparent process. My other, my observation was this, that we currently don't have anything in the code on this. And given the rarity with which it happens, which it comes up, and the current flexibility ability within the code that already exists, we've already been able to accomplish these things, both in the face of COVID and also very rare emergency at Claire's Place, without doing this. So it's, I think, an argument could be made that there are currently mechanisms under these very rare circumstances to deal with this. We don't even necessarily need to take any action. I I would think, I could think maybe an argument could be made, I don't know.
Yeah, except that the renewal.
With regard to the renew, okay, the renewal aspect.
That's, and that's the only thing that we're we're changing here. I guess anything could be on the table.
Although we we, the the Claire's Place temporary use did get renewed.
Because I ran an emergency ordinance to change the code, and the council agreed with it.
Right, but given the, again, the rarity with which this happens, this can happen under emergency services. So there is currently enough flexibility and exceptional and and but also unusual, and there is the ability. So, again, I think a could, a point could be made that we don't really need to maybe take any action specifically.
What if we left the code the same and went from sixty to ninety days? Would that be a better? Would that be a better window? I'm just wondering that the, what was the, do we know the origin of why it was limited to once a year? I mean, I think it's to to stop abuse or to make sure that there's some kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could see this being.
I could see this being kind of dangerous, although it's, it is so hard to imagine future scenarios, so. And what would need ninety days, but not sixty days, but not a hundred days?
No matter what date we arrange return it to, we're always at some point, someone's going to need, some situation is going to need a renewal. Like, you can make it sixty, you can make it ninety, make it a hundred, somebody's going to go run out the clock and renew it, so.
I would just say, at least in this situation, the renewal went through the council. There was there was process, there was some visibility, there was, it wasn't just, again, someone, you know, a dark room with no, you know, so again, I guess I'm just almost saying, is there a problem that really needs to be fixed?
I I concur with Commissioner Yanisak. It appears that, you know, the extraordinary circumstance that highlighted this issue was dealt with in an extraordinary way, which seems appropriate. If we mainstream that process, then I'm afraid that'll be subject to abuse. Given the low demand for temporary use permits, you know, so far, it seems like there's only downside to creating a bigger window. But maybe you've gone through these scenarios and have determined that's not the case.
And I would just add, I'm not saying that that this all sounds very reasonable to me.
Yeah.
So I'm not opposed to it really in any way, wouldn't be opposed to it. But, again, just an observation, and like I said, it it seems like maybe it's already working.
I guess said in a different way, are there scenarios where you can see this being abused?
It's hard. I, of course, I would not expect myself to abuse it, so so this is a future.
What would evil York do?
Right, a future administration with a future planning director and and all of that.
I mean, well, I I guess I would say, I don't really think that's, let's say, evil 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 York, evil planning director does something that's that ends up being abusive. Certainly, they answer to the mayor.
Yeah.
Enough outcry, the mayor could take independent action. If and if the mayor didn't do that, certainly the council then could respond with some with some. So there is, there would be these abilities to do that, probably on a fairly quick basis. So I just think, it seems to me, there's probably already enough mechanisms in place, both ways, both to 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 accomplish these things when they're rarely needed, and in the rare instance it was not, or what exceeded what people were going to willing to tolerate, there are mechanisms to deal with that already, too.
I I would just say, part of me thinks that, you know, as we seek to expand support, like, housing first, we do also assume an element of risk that people who are in housing-first situations do come with a lot of challenges that they're working to overcome. Hence the situation that occurred at Claire's Place, and situations have been cited for other housing providers of the county. And so this may not be an uncommon thing, or less, or maybe more common than we want to see. But that, again, that's still the question of like, what's the administrative threshold for like, how common is it to just say, council, let me do it?
I guess the, so an interesting, if this were to play out again, I believe that Claire's Place is in an R1 zone also. So you can't use this tool if it's otherwise permitted in a zone. So let's say this was happening in the mixed urban zone, which does allow permanent supportive housing, but it takes a process to get there, including public notice and all that. I would interpret that you could not use. I would interpret that you could not use this because it's, it is allowed and you can't skirt the process by which it's normally allowed. So it is a pretty unique place to have, and then Claire's place was, um, cited in a zone that wouldn't otherwise allow it because it was owned and controlled by a religious organization, which provided that, um, state, uh, state required pathway to allow permanent supportive housing in a zone that it otherwise wouldn't. So in a similarly cited situation where both the facility was in, let's say, the mixed urban zone as well as the adjacent city owned land, I don't think you could use this temporary use provision, and so we might be back to emergency declaration or something.
So basically the same process that we just did for this one. Going to the council, be like, hey, we got to do this. And then, so if that's the case, like, if if any future remedies are like, hey, council, we got to do this, then I'm kind of with Commissioner Yanisak, like, we're just going to go to our leadership and go, hey, we have to do this.
How, how? Here's a, an idea, what about doing the the council approval, like reversed? That having, um, the the planning director be able to issue this under the review one process? But then the council being able to revoke it if, say, they disagreed with the renewal?
Yeah, there's a couple precedents for things like that. Uh, the emergency ordinance itself, um, comes with a public hearing after the fact. So the council adopts an emergency ordinance, it takes effect immediately because it's an emergency, you skip the public hearing, but you need to go back and do the public hearing. But the public hearing is after you've already completed the action, but you can't, uh, the public always gets the right to be heard. So you can do things and then kind of go back and finish up some of the process later for some of these. I, I don't think we should go to the council for an emergency ordinance interim official control to extend a temporary use permit anymore. I think we should either have a process to renew or some of these other ideas. I really appreciate the sounding board, by the way, this is, this is great food for thought, exactly why, uh, why I like to come here. But I I don't think doing, uh, doing that again is the right way to go. It could continue to be limited. I need to learn more about, we all need to learn more about that, uh, that other big emergency declaration. We know it, it exists, and I think there's powers in the charter around the council and the mayor because obviously there are some emergencies where you need to waive all the rules. We didn't want to go down that path, and so we kind of, I at least stopped at the temporary use for this situation because it worked. But there will be situations where it doesn't work.
Tonight, you're not asking, we're not asking us to make a decision on this anyway, you're just taking input.
This is a briefing discussion, um, and I'll, I'll take questions and and thoughts and craft. Uh, we have until March, there's no particular rush, so we could come back for another briefing and then I could draft a resolution to the council after that. So, yeah, this is, this is a discussion and an introduction to the topic.
Well, I would just say, I think it's been a good discussion and I would, my thought would be, you know, take this back, work with staff and come up with something and then maybe come back to us with that, you know, potentially for vote. And I think we we would love to have a particular recommendation then from maybe from staff as well.
Yeah, well, my recommendation coming into this is what was in exhibit A.
Well, no, yeah, I get that, but I mean, as far as specific, you know, and maybe in in response, having considered some of these other things, and if 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 it's still staff's position of a certain thing, then I think I would, I know I would certainly consider that.
So a couple of things that I've heard is, uh, public notice on renewals, expecting that there would be more lead time for a renewal than there would be for the first one, so that's something I'll look into. Uh, the potential of council, what do we call that? Council veto authority after the fact. Maybe a little bit more around kind of transparency and visibility of the of the action short of a time, time using, uh, public comment period. So a requirement that it be posted, but not before you take the action or something.
And I would just say, at the risk, not not to sound dictatorial or anything, but I think there can be emergency situations where maybe too much public input could actually be detrimental. There need, so I think certainly in these emergency situations, there needs to be a certain ability for there to be quick decisions made that are reasonable and that respond to real emergent situations. So I think that's the balance, right? But I guess at least me, I certainly agree that there are times, emergencies where decisions need to be made quickly and, um, trust that our, as you said, that our leaders and and appointed bureaucrats can 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 do that appropriately.
I guess I just have one clarification, like you you mentioned, like another, another instance in an area where this multi-use, where this is zone, we couldn't do a temporary use permit.
Right.
So maybe that isn't just, you know, modifying the renewal of it, but like, say if this does happen again in an area where we can't use the temporary use permit and we still need to use the temporary use permit, maybe we just kind of carve out better, some language in there to just be more expansive, say, there is an immediate need, we have to address it, like. Because I just, I just, to me, it makes no, it makes even less sense if if this is, if this is authorized in the area, we can't do a temporary version of this to do it, address an emergency concern without declaring a declaration of emergency. That makes, that that seems a little counterintuitive to me.
But on the other hand, that's what a declaration, that's what these declaration of emergency procedures exist for. So if there really is an emergency, utilize it, the council can pass an emergency ordinance for even a temporary. There's a lot of things that can be done.
We're trying to get like emergency ordinance, emergency declaration light right here, you know.
And I get that, but on the other hand, I just don't know why it's, it's, it is a legitimate thing. And so if there really is an emergency, I don't know that we should necessarily be afraid to to use it if that's what's called for. To codify it, then it becomes not emergency.
Well, I think. We're we're trying to avoid having to declare an emergency for emergencies that, like, just one or two buildings are affected by, right? That seems to be.
Because I think the scope of emergency declaration is much greater than the scope of a temporary move permit. And so, you know, like, you know, we didn't need to like give the mayor, like, complete an absolute, you know, power to remedy the Claire's place issue. So I just, we're we're scaling, we're scaling our, the scope of powers to the response and need. And we kind of identified that, you know, we, there is a land use component that we need to just expedite to address a situation. Again, like my, my thought goes back to, it seems odd that we can't do a temporary permit for a use that's already authorized in an area, per my understanding of this language has been explained to me, like. Pardon me would say, we should go back and revisit that because it's going to be unique situ, there's going to be situations where we need to remedy a building's issue.
Yeah. I, it could be an opportunity too. Again, I'm 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 challenged in thinking of, uh, of examples, but there could be an opportunity where it's, you're not fixing something broken, but maybe, you know, the introduction to this section mentions, uh, community festivals and fresh vegetable stands.
I mean, this could be a great use of like demonstrative tactical urbanism, like, hey, we're going to set up a, you know, a unique, you know, park, like a set of parklets here and parking spots, we're authorizing it here. So it could be a great way to kind of figure out how we can use and engage, reactivate space, a hundred and ten percent, which also doesn't require a declaration of emergency of, by the mayor to do so. This is an emergency, this is an emergency parklet festival, you know, that doesn't make any sense.
Right. I guess I thought there was a a limitation on commercial uses in residential zones. I wonder if that would be the kind of thing where you've got a, a property in a residential zone does not allow retail sales and services. There is a mention of parking lot sales not to exceed ten consecutive days, but, uh, maybe wanted to set up a restaurant thing in a, in a residential zone. I don't know how, um, I would look at that, I guess.
But under that example, and under the current code, so long as it didn't exceed sixty days, they could get a temporary use permit, correct?
Correct, right.
So there's no problem there either.
Yep, right, yep. And so renewal of that, uh, ad infinitum would be unlikely, probably. The criteria remain there. And I guess if it's visible like that, there is an appeal to the hearing examiner that, that I said it's not materially detrimental, but someone disagrees, then there's a process to adjudicate that.
I guess I, again, I'm I'm open to streamlining this process if that ultimately seems like the best idea. Given the low demand for temporary use permits in the past, uh, I guess what we're not looking for is this becoming a new tool to skirt zoning.
Right.
And so I would say, think through, uh, how one might go about using this in a way that wasn't intended and see if that's desirable.
Right, yep. Sounds good. I'll take a look at a couple of other cities too. I looked at one, uh, Renton, and it was like four pages long. It was, it was huge and very detailed, um, with different categories of temporary uses and everything. I didn't get much beyond that in terms of looking at what other folks do, because I wasn't, didn't want to make this a, 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 a full referendum on the whole, uh, code rather than just this renewal piece. But it'd be useful to go take a look at a couple others for inspiration.
Any further comments or questions? All right, uh, it does not appear that we have anyone in person to comment. Do we have anyone online?
None.
All right, let's move on to agenda item five A, twenty twenty four work program. Becky.
All right, it's time for the technical, uh. Yeah, Becky, we see you. Do we hear you?
Can you hear me?
We hear you too?
Okay, great, well, I won't take too much time. I'm, I have an echo, I wonder if I should.
You sound fine on this end, but that's going to be tough for you. I think all microphones are off.
Okay, great. Well, uh, we wanted to start the year off bringing to you the, uh, twenty twenty four long range work program because most everything that we do involves the planning commission. It's probably pretty obvious that the main work that we'll be doing this year is and slightly into the next year is the comprehensive plan periodic update. So I've tried to, um, divide the work in which you will see into quarters. And I realized that some of that text may be small on the screen, but you should have a handout too that you can look at. Um, so to quickly go through that, um, the first quarter, you're getting an update on the project schedule. The second or the, yeah, the other thing that should be happening relatively quickly is the alternatives were set, and one of the pieces of the alternatives was to finish then what the land capacity is using the new alternatives. So, um, that is well underway and we expect to have that. And I have the information that you will want to take a look at, uh, exactly where the distribution of growth will happen based on the alternatives. Uh, we will start to bring to you some updated policy work for your review so that, um, you will not be getting this all at once towards the end, but that we work with you along the way to, uh, talk to you about how uh, the city's policies in the comprehensive plan will be updated. We expect to have a joint meeting with the historic commission, and that will probably be the first, um, policy review that you'll be taking a look at. They've been doing that work now for a few months. And during the first quarter, we hope to have some, um, development regulations that have to be part of the the periodic updates. We can start to, um, deliver some concepts to you. We're pretty far on middle housing, I think we're, we're going to want to bring that conversation up again because that is a very involved code project. So we'll start to introduce some of those items. In the second quarter, uh, we will be at a point where we can issue the draft supplemental environmental impact, continue with some of our updated policy review. Since we'll be issuing the draft SEIS, excuse me, we'll also be doing some community outreach around that. We may ask the planning commission to hold a public hearing on that. This is the time too that we will start to work internally and with the planning commission and councils to develop the preferred alternative. And then we are setting a deadline because even though we did a call for specific amendments, there's still some internal, um, amendments that that may come forward. And we need to set a deadline because those do need to get reviewed in, uh, in the F D I S, the final environmental impact statement. So we have to set an absolute deadline for that, and that would be probably somewhere near the end of the second quarter. In the third quarter, which is the July to September, you will, um, are we, third quarter, uh, we will work to set a preferred alternative. And that takes us through September. Um, and we will be working with you again along the way to get that preferred alternative set because that's what we will issue our final, uh, supplemental environmental impact. So we'll be working with you and the council to do that. We'll be able to, prior to that, we'll be talking to you about the environmental impacts and the mitigation. So we'll discuss that with you, um, on the alternative so that we can formulate that preferred alternative. And then we will start to see some updated elements along with the policy review and of course, community outreach. In the fourth quarter, the end of the year, there we will continue to brief you on or introduce you to updated plan elements. But that will also start your briefings on the staff recommended plan. Uh, we will also be briefing the city council, so we're going to keep them informed as we move along as well and issue that final supplemental environmental impact statement. And finally, in the first quarter, we would expect that the planning commission will be able to early on, uh, make their recommendation on a preferred plan. Uh, and then the city council will, will go through their process and move to adoption. And then our final steps are going to be compliance submittals to commerce. And we also have to have our plan certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council in order to be eligible for our at least transportation funding. So we'll, we'll continue to get, try to engage with the community throughout all of these processes. So, um, that'll be a huge part of third, fourth and and first quarter of twenty twenty five. As you can see, sometimes we have to have, that's the comprehensive plan. Um, we need to bring forward some code amendments as needed. We're trying to incorporate everything into our periodic update process so that it's all together. But, um, just with the temporary use, then sometimes we just have to to move those forward. And then the Sound Transit Model Code partnership work has been continuing. It may, some of that may be integrated as part of the comprehensive plan periodic update. But we would like to start engage, engaging with you on some of those concepts and what that project is, is all about as the detail starts to emerge. And I think that's a pretty full schedule for the planning commission for twenty twenty four and even into twenty twenty five. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I'll just add that in the the very brief memo, which just has a list of dates for this item, you can see our regular meeting schedule is in the dark color and then in gray are the potential supplemental dates. Uh, we do ask that if if possible, you keep those days available. We've got one year left, um, on the comp plan, a lot of work, as Becky laid out. Uh, we try to be very judicious with planning commission time and, uh, uh, not schedule extra meetings, but this might be one of those years where we'll need it as we chug our way to the finish line. but this might be one of those years where we'll need it as we chug our way to the finish line. But I don't, we definitely won't use all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. So yeah. Any discussion?
York, should we plan on 2006 as a Planning Commission meeting?
Please hold that date, yep. And we'll send you notice as soon as I know. And then you'll have the agenda packet as normal.
Great, and I think that, as we talked before regarding the Park District, I think Commissioner Yanisak asked for that information as far in advance as possible.
Yes.
All right, do we, we don't have anyone in person, no one online. All right, well, with that, that's the end of our agenda. So I guess we are adjourned. We don't need a vote to adjourn, do we?
No.
No, okay. Well, thanks everyone and happy new year.